The Policy Committee meeting to order. And it is, that's curriculum. Sorry, just trying to get this organized. And present tonight, Ms. Bishop is here, Mr. Guarino.
Here.
And Ms. Seem.
Here.
Present also, we have, oh my gosh, why am I forgetting your name?
Diane.
Diane Carey. I was like, I knew your first name.
I do the same thing, it's so hard.
So Ms. Carey, Mr. Parker, and Mr. Rodriguez. We have two things that we just need to kind of goof around with on the agenda. I'm hoping for some consensus. Mr. Rodriguez would like to present first in regards to the policies that we will be reviewing. But we also have Mr. Dunn, who is here, who's our Student Board Rep from North, with a quick presentation about bringing some coffee into the school. And I'm very excited to see the work that you've put into this. So is it okay if we go with Mr. Rodriguez first?
Absolutely.
Okay, Ms. Seem, how do you feel? With Mr. Rodriguez going first?
Yes, of course.
And then are we okay adding Mr. Spencer, Mr. Dunn? Mr. Dunn to the agenda after that?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect.
Can I have a take a seat?
Yes, come on up here.
Come on down.
It's like the Price is Right. Come on down. Can we all yell and scream? My patients at the hospital call that the screaming show.
That's not it, that's right.
So the first policy, well, Mr. Rodriguez, let's speak to the policies that you're going to be informing us about.
Yeah, so I'm gonna try to explain because, so last May of 2020, or two May's ago, presented a policy, it wasn't really a policy, it's called the Data Governance Plan. And it's how, not just the Technology Department, but everybody who is involved in, who handles data, or data custodians, how they're supposed to handle the data responsibly, you know, if there was a disaster, how we respond, data definitions, privacy, and a bunch of appendices. It's a very long document, it's 42 pages, but that's, it's not the policy. So the policy that I'm presenting is the EHAB, Data Governance and Security. So this is the actual policy that states that we're supposed to update the Data Governance Plan. So this is the policy that is presented. It's kind of like the broad outline of what the Data Governance Plan is and the spirit of it, but this dictates like what we can, what we have to do every year to keep the plan updated and then present it to the full board.
So he's not gonna go up the road.
It's very light reading, 42 pages, I believe, so.
That's a lot.
Just an afternoon.
It's a quick afternoon. I mean, it's interesting if you're interested in that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Which I do, I do think that stuff is interesting, but I recognize I live on an island by myself.
I also think it's interesting.
Do you guys have any questions?
I was talking to you earlier about my concern. I would really like to see us have, we used to have a data information on the website. And especially at a time like when we're having 11 candidates, it would be nice for them to have a document that said, you know, this is the personnel, this is the schools, this is the homelessness, this information, just data, just because it's, when you're first on the board, I think it's overwhelming. Took me five years before I wanted to say hello. Because I knew so little, I mean, there's just so much to wrap your arms around, so I would still like to see us do that, but, but I appreciate your coming and sharing this with us.
No problem.
So the, the policy that we're looking to work on is the policy EHAB, Data Governance and Security.
Correct, yeah.
So I'm looking for a motion to bring that to the full board.
There were no changes?
It's new.
Oh, it's brand new. Oh, I'm sorry, sure, sure. I did what I said I wasn't gonna do, I opened my mouth and showed you how little I know. Well, then.
Well, it is woven in here with a lot of ones that were, you know.
And it's 80 pages, so will somebody go over all 80 pages? Is this, is this the document that was 80 pages?
So the, the original document that was presented in, in May 2020, that was, there was a presentation for, for the actual Data Governance Plan. So that, that has been presented to the full board. So this is the policy that surrounds us, updating the policy and reexamining it yearly. So this is what dictates us what to do with the policy.
I'm sorry.
Right, so our policy would be, we would follow that and then IT updates it as needed?
Correct, yep. In conjunction with the Superintendent's.
Right.
Yep, and different departments, so.
And the policy directs him to, directs that department to stay on top of it?
Yep.
So we don't have to come back to it every year whenever there's a change that needs to be made?
Correct, yep.
I'm sorry to be such a pain. So am I assuming correctly then that there are basically no changes from, well, August 2021, it's only a month or so, and that would be while I was in Las Vegas, so I have an excuse for my stupidity. But I hope you all forgive me.
I hope you had fun.
Thank you.
I don't, since, since this was written, no, there has been no changes made to this.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm looking to.
I make a motion.
Okay.
That we, I believe you're saying you want to forward this to the full board, so I make a motion that we forward this document to the full board for approval.
I'll second.
Okay. And on the, on the motion to send policy EHAB to the full board for approval, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Motion passes 3 to 0. Thank you, and we appreciate all the work that you put into it. Sorry, we didn't have many more questions for you, but you're so thorough.
I appreciate it.
And I trust that you guys are gonna stay on top of it, so.
Absolutely, yeah. We have, yeah, we plan to make, you know, changes needed every year, so.
Mm-hmm. And if you want, whoever is Policy Chair in the future, just, you know, if you want to send them an email that it's getting done, if they want to just take a peek at it?
Sure, absolutely.
But.
Yeah, part of, part of the, this is also on the website too, so it's, any edits that are made can be seen on the website. So it's on, it's under the Technology Department, under data privacy. So the full 42 pages is, is right there for, for public.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your night.
You as well.
You can if you want to. This is riveting, riveting stuff here. Spencer, do you need to click into anything, or are you just gonna do a verbal presentation?
Um, I mean, I could, I could send you the PowerPoint or go over it, but I think for right now, I kind of have some key points and I could just present it verbally to you guys.
Okay, perfect.
Um, so, am I gonna start?
Yes.
All right.
Oh, let me, sorry, I am gonna interrupt you. So what we're doing, and I know, Mr. Parker, I meant to connect with you earlier about this, but I wasn't able to. We're not looking to do a vote or anything tonight, we're just listening to Spencer's proposal, and then if we need to do follow-up information or anything, we can look at it and then at the next policy meeting, present it if it needs to be approved to go to the full board, but this is just informational.
If there are no exemptions, could we ask for a motion tonight, or is that?
I would rather bring it back to administration and have them be able to put in their, their two cents about it, so.
And.
Yeah.
They had upfront my one concern about this, is that we have a wellness policy that this week. That's what I'm kind of talking about, to exempt a certain policy in that wellness policy. That's why I came to the Policy Committee. Okay.
Go through the process and adjustments to the process.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Please put your mic, microphone on.
Oh, is his mic not on?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you were saying, Mr. Parker.
What I was saying was, we need to follow the process, because right now, he's asking, might be asking of a waiver to our wellness policy, a section of our wellness policy. And so that is not necessarily a small undertaking, and there was other people that we need to talk to.
Right.
At this level, and so, no adjustments to the policy, we need to follow the procedure.
Right. So this is just informational, this is.
Yes, that totally makes sense, yep. Gotta follow the policy to get it all done.
Yeah.
So just some background, so students are allowed to bring in coffee, Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks are usually your specialties that come to North and South. And students are allowed to bring that in, so a lot of students come to school, they'll bring in their coffee. A lot of students are late because they're sitting in the long Starbucks line in the morning. And for, as part of the USDA guidelines, they actually state that high schools can provide low and no caloric, provide low and no caloric beverages with or without caffeine or carbonation, calorie-free flavored water. So in the USDA guidelines, there is, it is totally allowed to sell coffee in schools, and actually, Lakes Region, up in, by the Lakes Region, Lakes Region Regional High School has a very robust system where they do sell coffee before and during their free period, equivalent to our E Block. So I was hoping, the marketing teachers have met and they proposed a plan to do it through our school stores, and sell coffee in the morning from 6:50 to 7:10 in the morning, and then maybe transition that to E Block as well, but the first proposal would be just in the morning. And the argument was that since students are already allowed to bring coffee into school, why don't we sell it? And that still follows the USDA guidelines, students get access to it, there are a lot of positives, as studies, kids are more focused in class, they should do sleeping, things like that. And I think that the, what they were asking was to suspend pay, the policy in Page 2 of the GLCF Wellness Policy that, that states that caffeine cannot be, caffeinated beverages cannot be sold in school. So I, I'm not fully aware of the process to eliminate that policy, but I'd really like to discuss that tonight and see what we can do to move that forward.
So I think that's some, I, I think that's something that we have to look at with Mr. Parker, the rest of administration, because it, it might open up kind of other, I don't want to say loopholes, but I think we have to be very specific about what we're asking. And I think we would probably need to spend some time workshopping, I mean, word shopping, word smithing.
Word smithing, yeah.
Jeez Louise. How we would go about doing that. I know that the wellness guidelines, that the wellness policy that we have now is, is pretty direct from the federal standards on what we can serve in school-for-school lunches. But I think we need to look at a couple of other policies to see where it fits in. It would also, I think the follow-up questions would be, who is selling this? Are we having, is it run by the students? Are we having coffee machines pulled in? There's an initial investment that goes into it, probably all the stuff that you've been talking about with your marketing teachers.
Yes, they were all taking care of that. It would be sold in the stores run by either the DECA or marketing classes, and they would take care of all the overhead and of the, or they would make it themselves, or buy cans and, or like, kind of pre-made cans.
Yep.
And they would sell it that way, and everything would be taken care of by the marketing departments.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And what about, oh, who's, is marketing, so I'm assuming that it would be run kind of like the school store is run, so somebody's setting up a price point on it. What do we do with the profits of the school store?
Um, it goes back into the school store and it's used for products, and I think kids manage it themsel, or, I mean, a teacher oversees it, but they teach the students to manage the funds.
Nice.
To reinvest it back in the school store and school activities for students.
Excellent. Ms. Seem?
During my time on the board, this has come before us, I think at least twice. Both times it was denied. From my own personal perspective, I would want to hear from the teachers, I would want to hear from, from National High School North, National High School South, how it, I think it's a, it's a hot topic, is that what I want to say?
Yes, yes.
And so checking all the, all of the data would be critical to, it may be challenging, is what I'm suggesting to you, so.
Yes.
And I definitely would want to hear from staff.
Okay.
I wish, truthfully, I would love to have staff in our meetings here, because I think sometimes they bring a working knowledge that we as board members don't have. And I think when you're making policies that affect that working element, that, then those people should have a big voice in it. So, so that's just my personal comments. But I appreciate the leadership you're taking, it's always inspiring to see our young people taking the lead, saying this is what we want to do, have it, have it given us a shot. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I think, I think what Ms. Seem says, it makes a lot of sense. However, I would, I would, I would be leaning to approve this under certain circumstances, especially for the upper grades. And I would, I would still keep the, I would still keep the, the rule that says no caffeine, and I would just say with the, the exception of coffee under certain circumstances. Because as you say, it looks like some of the upper grade, upperclassmen are, are getting a lot of caffeine anyways before they come to school. And so if, if under, under certain conditions, just for the upperclassmen, I, I would, I would make an exception for them. But as, as Ms. Seem said, I think we should hear from the teachers and administration. But, but I think you make a strong case, because a lot of these students are drinking coffee, and, and their parents are allowing them to do it. So I would be, under certain circumstances, I would say it's probably a good idea.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Dunn.
Yeah, I think that's very good to hear. And I did talk to the marketing teacher at North, Ms. Jingeris, who had brought this idea up to me. She is more than happy to come to a policy meeting or a board meeting to talk on this topic too. I also did mention it to Mr. Richard at South, Mr. Burns at North, and Dr. McKinney, and they all seemed on board for me to bring it to policy and go and talk about it here, which it seems like we want to bring it back to administration to get the data, what they feel on it, and then bring it back here.
And I think, yeah, I think, I knew that it had come before, come before the board before. I just think it was missing some elements. And I think we could probably work together on grabbing some more questions and getting them answered. But like Mr. Guarino, I'm, I'm leaning towards it, because I watch the kids, I drop my daughter off every morning, I watch the kids walk in with coffees. Like, if they're gonna come in with it anyway, we might as well make a buck off it.
One of my concerns would be how you monitor it. If you, if you, for instance, let's say that there's a 10-minute period, so now the line is so long that they don't all get through in 10 minutes, which that's what I perceive happening, then, and if you were going to Mr. Guarino's point, where you would have just the upperclassmen, the 11th and 12th graders, how are you gonna manage to that? Are you gonna give them a card with their picture on it, like a driver's license? So there are.
We do have student IDs with our card and our picture on it.
And they use that to pay?
Yeah, we use, yeah.
So it is kind of like a driver's license. But I understand your point exactly, and I think that's something that the marketing teachers themselves that would oversee it would, that's a question for them, and I think bringing that to them and seeing how they would handle that is a very good idea.
The other thing is, is it going to open up, like they've stopped, I believe, and I may be wrong here too, because again, my practical knowledge is not as good as the staff. But they have done away with, with selling, I believe, like the soda machines, you can't get soda, or is that correct?
I think you can get sparkling juices, but that falls under the wellness policy.
In other words, it's not caffeine?
Yes, no, they're not caffeinated, yes.
So if you open caffeine on one level and you have it closed on another level, is that going to open up another bag of worms? And if they just close down that, I, I think that's been closed down in the recent last couple of years, if I'm not mistaken, and I could easily be, because I was off the board for a year, two years maybe. And so I'm just saying, it has, it has, it has things that need to be.
Right, that's, that's what I was saying, Ms. Seem, is that it, it could open up some loopholes for other things, but maybe there's a way to make it very specific about like, it's only sold in the, in the school stores, only available to upperclassmen, you know, there's, there's a way of making, there's a way of presenting this so that it narrows down who, who gets it. I know when I was in high school here, I lived off Sunkist and Skittles, is what I had for lunch every day. But that was before this policy was made.
Mine was so long ago, I don't remember. So you're fortunate, you still have many good years to go. Thank you.
So Mr. Dunn, we thank you very much for bringing this to us. I think we're probably gonna have some follow-up questions, is it okay if we email you?
That is more than, that's more than fine.
Okay.
And then I can also give you the contact to Ms. Jingeris at North, who is overseeing this project as well.
Perfect. And we can just kind of workshop it behind the scenes and then present it again to the committee, and then hopefully onto the full board.
Okay, that sounds great, and I will let Ms. Jingeris know tomorrow when I see her in school.
Okay. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I don't think so, I think kind of, as you said, workshopping this outside and getting the approval of the power voices and kind of eliminating those loopholes to kind of get a plan that we would, that would be first approved in the, then this Policy Committee, but then able to, it, I think the trick here is being able to create a policy that would be approved by the board, and kind of meeting, meeting the opinions of all, or the majority of the board members. So when creating that, working with both administration and the teachers themselves to kind of create this, and maybe bring it at the next Policy Committee, and then bring it forth to the board, I think is a key thing for this.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for running over here, Spencer just came from a soccer game. He is one busy fellow.
Now I have to go finish up my college application.
Oh geez. Well, if you need your letters of recommendation, we're all here for you.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
I love all the work that was put into that, that's fantastic. Really goes to show that our, you know, our high schoolers are just crushing it, so I'm glad he was able to come up with that. So I think now we can go back in order. We can start off with policy GCFA, Election Appointment of Personnel. And I'm gonna have to scroll back and forth, because we didn't get paper copies this week, because there's an issue with paper and toner and all that stuff, but it's all over the place. So we're getting our information emailed to us, which is what I'm looking at, is the Board of Ed packet, policy packet. So I'm just gonna be scrolling up and down, but it is a bit more distracting for me, so. Mr. Parker, do you want to speak on this?
Our intent here is to streamline our policies, as part of a larger piece, and if we vote to move this forward, and that's what we're recommending, we therefore recommend that you rescind policy 8215. That was a small piece that was sort of hanging out by itself, that seemed to fit under the already existing policy GCFA. Okay, and so we're just consolidating and streamlining. All right, and so to recommend policy GCFA, that's married to number two, excuse me, the last sentence of policy 8215, to be rescinded, as it will no longer be necessary to be a standalone policy.
Right. So I think my goal, I have no desire to add to policies, but I'm trying to clean up, declutter if you will. But yeah, so we would be looking at adopting policy GCFA, and then looking at rescinding the original policy.
Don't you have to rescind first?
Nope, you have to appoint, you have to put it on the, on the books first, and then rescind, because we can't be without a policy, even for a second.
So I make a motion that we approve policy GCFA.
On the motion to bring policy GCFA to the full board for approval, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And then I think we're looking to.
Rescind.
Rescind policy 8215.
So moved.
On the motion to send policy 8215 to the full board to be rescinded, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Passes 3 to 0. And then the next policy that we're looking at is policy 8218, Assignments and Transfers. So we're looking at updating this from a number code to a letter code, so it fits our format. And there are a couple of changes in there, in that the last sentence, number four, we read, "In developing assignment schedule, such factors will be considered," colon, and then removing the word personality in 4B, remove letter F completely, and at the end of section number four, add, "Please note that this list is not all-inclusive." Do you want to add to that, Mr. Parker?
That was pretty straightforward, and this, Ms. Carey reviewed as well, and certain, and her team, and so what you see is what you get. And just to make it, you know, more useful, more modern in the language, and to reflect precisely the policy, the process of assignments and transfers, so.
Excellent. Do you have any questions, Mr. Guarino?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay.
So you want to make a motion to approve policy GCK, Professional Staff Assignments and Transfers?
I will second.
Is that the, I just want, Ms. Carey, is that the correct way of doing it, is that we're moving to replace number code 8218 with GCK as amended?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought you had to approve the, the new one, you're saying it's just changing
They're making some edits and policies have a letter.
And the other one wasn't, okay.
Have a letter instead of the numbers.
So then I.
Right, because in the first one, we were rescinding the policy 8215 and rolling it into GCFA.
So I want to make a motion that we change policy GCK to reflect the changes that have been presented? Is that what I want to say?
So a motion to approve policy GCK.
As changed.
As amended.
So now we're gonna, do we also have to then rescind policy 8218 after we do that?
Well, we're updating policy 8218, so we're not rescinding it, we're just renaming it.
Okay.
So to approve policy GCK as amended, as amended, to replace, to update, I'll just make, to update, policy 8218. So Ms. Seem made that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, on the motion to approve policy, no, I'm sorry, move to send policy. Okay, on the motion to approve policy, no, I'm sorry, move to send policy G C K as amended to update policy 8218 to the full board. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Motion passes. So I have in my notes here that they're looking to rescind policy 81, 8218, but I think we just did that in the first one. So I think that's fine. We don't need to address that. Okay. The third section, same thing, updating policy 8219 in regards to retirement. And we're looking to replace the number code with letter code G C Q E and recommending to remove number two as this is the purview of the superintendent.
I apologize to you if I'm a little confused, but my printer is not working. And I just got back from Las Vegas, and so I guess I'm trying to think on my feet. So, but I'm going to make a policy here, a motion to approve policy G C Q E, retirement of professional staff members as presented.
I'll second.
And this, this fits in with the HR policy. There are no concerns, right? Okay. So on the motion to send policy G C Q E as amended to the full board, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And you are saying we do not need to rescind that policy 8219? I think if it's, if it has been incorporated into the one above, it needs to be rescinded so that, so that, does that make sense? It does to me, but doesn't mean I'm right. It just means it makes sense to me.
Maybe.
Then I think this document is, it's all right. Okay, if we don't need to do it, we won't do it.
I think just in the, in the agenda, it's saying that we do, that they want us to rescind it.
It clearly says rescind policy, rescind policy, rescind. And if they, every single time it says it. So to me, that means that even if the change is just a nominal change, the new changed one is the policy, the old one is rescinded. You can't have them both in place. So I think you do, we've always rescinded them as you, I think.
Right.
We've always done it, doing both, rescind one, replace it with the other. So I think, but doesn't mean I'm right. It just means that's what my burden is.
I don't think, I think even if we updated it and renamed it, there's no harm in making a motion to rescind the numerical one.
Well, I just think to have both of them is redundant. And if you don't say rescind, then they're going to stay on the books.
That's what I'm trying to do is pull them off.
That's the way I would look at it. So I think we need to rescind all of them. I honestly tell you, I cannot imagine that. I make a motion that we rescind policy 8219.
I will second.
Okay. On the motion to rescind policy 8219, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Do we want to circle back?
Oh, I make a motion that we rescind policy 8218.
I'll second.
On the motion to rescind, I keep forgetting to say full board, I apologize. On the motion to send policy 8218 to the full board to be rescinded, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And then I make a motion, we need the last one, right? Did I just do the second one?
We actually did, we did that one.
First one, okay.
Yeah.
Because you said to do it, yes, thank you. All right, so now we want to go to number four. I'm sorry.
That's okay. You have many more years of experience under your belt, Sandra, so please. Does everything feel right? So the next policy that we're looking at is, we're looking to adopt policy E H, distribution of public records.
I make a motion that we approve that policy as presented.
I will second.
Okay, on the motion to send policy E H to the full board for approval, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
You're right, it's not here. I don't see it either. That's all right. I also make a motion that we, that we rescind policy 11212.
Okay. Mr. Guarino, are you able to second that?
I will second.
Okay. On the motion to send policy 11212 to the full board to be rescinded, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
I'm assuming that that is just missing, that you've reviewed it and that that's what you wanted to, okay. Then we, and number five.
So number five, we already did when Mr. Rodriguez was here. That was in regards to the E H A B. And then number six on our agenda is policy J B A A dash R in regards to sexual discrimination, sexual harassment, and sexual violence, students appendix.
Is that one in here? I don't see that either.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm scrolling down to see it, too.
Oh, it's at the back.
Ms. Seem, is, hey, it is on the online one, but it's simply, the only thing we're doing to this in the appendix, it has all the different names of principals and other key people, and we're just, we're suggesting remove the names so we don't have to keep updating it, okay?
A lot more sense, doesn't it?
Everything remains the same. We're just removing the actual names, and we're going to include Brentwood Academy's new address.
Yep.
At 55 Franklin Street.
So I make a motion that we approve policy J B A A dash R as presented.
I'll second.
You mean send it to the full board for approval?
Yes.
Okay. And it is in our packet? It's right here, Ms. Seem?
No. Oh, yeah, but.
And all we did was we took out the names of principals so that as we have any kind of turnover, we don't need to bring this back to policy to update.
Makes a lot of sense.
That's what I was trying to do. Cut the fat.
Did good.
Okay, so Ms. Seem makes the motion to send J B A A R to the full board. And Mr. Guarino, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Okay. And then we took a look at a lot of other policies, and I figured you guys may have some questions about them because they're policies that can be found either in handbooks, online, in job descriptions. They're just a bit redundant, Mr. Parker.
Or no longer in effect.
Or no longer in effect.
So for instance, forecasting enrollment. Is there another place? That's redundant, I hope. You must, yeah, you got to forecast, okay.
Yeah, let me get.
Can you, can you just, are there any of them that are, so some of them are redundant and some of them are no longer effective? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Yes, it doesn't surprise me. Okay. So do we want to approve these individually, one by one, or do you want to do it as a group?
I think we should go one by one, just in case we have any questions.
Okay, so I make a motion that we rescind policy 12211, forecasting enrollment.
I'll second.
Okay. So on the motion to send policy 1211 to the full board for, to be rescinded, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
What is N E S D E C?
N S D C? They're just things, we're working with this around the beach, or redistricting, and they, they work with schools and various, various policy. And Donovan works with, um, for Jasmine.
Okay.
Okay, the next policy that we're looking to rescind is policy 2213, addition of curricula or programs. This is a policy that was initially set up in 1979 and was last approved in 1985.
So I make a motion that we rescind policy 2213 and present it to the board for approval.
I'll second.
Okay. On the motion to send policy 2213 to the full board to be rescinded, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Moving right along. Okay, so the next policy that we're looking to rescind is policy 2410.1, elementary guidance services. We did this with the other guidance services policy. Many of this, much of this is no longer conducted, and the rest of it can be found in job descriptions and handbooks.
So in elementary, can you tell me how much guidance, isn't it just one guidance council for school? Am I wrong?
Yes.
Oh. Yeah, that's, that's actually, thank you so much for sharing that, Mr. Parker, because that's, that's really what, when I called you today, that was, you, you're doing exactly what I, what I was saying was in the strategic plan that, that I was hoping we had implemented, and it sounds like you are implementing it.
And, and Ms. Bishop, in review, policies that should be presented to work on them, relevant people who have some expertise in that area, they will see it first, just like HR, guidance, special education, student services. So many eyes will have.
Seen it.
Seen it.
And that's, that's exactly what the strategic plan was, was hoping to accomplish. Because again, they, they have the hands-on experience that those of us on the board, we just don't have it. All right, so, so did I make the motion?
You can if you want to.
I make a motion that we rescind policy 2410, elementary guidance services, and send it to the board for approval.
I will second.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Passes three zero. The next policy that we're looking at, oh, this feels like decluttering. Doesn't anybody else feel good about this? Okay, the next policy we're looking at is 2214, program of studies post-graduates.
I make a motion that we rescind policy 2214, program of studies post-graduates, and present it to the board for approval.
Second.
Okay, on Ms. Seem's motion, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Well, can I just ask, I'm assuming then that there's something else that replaces this? Because you certainly have to know? Is that why we're replacing this one?
Not necessarily. I mean, the process, I'm sure this policy in the eighties at one point made some kind of sense.
In the eighties? Well, it was 41 years ago, so that has to be.
But it made no sense.
Considerably remote. Yes, obsolete. Okay, thank you so kindly. I'm all set. Oh, yes, I vote yes, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem votes yes. Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Okay, passes three zero. The next policy, policy 2420, use of library or information centers, looking to rescind. Again, a lot of these are in the handbook when you sign up for, you know, your library card. Us parents sign.
Do all of the schools.
Saying that if our kid loses stuff, we pay for it.
The question that pops through my mind is, do all of our elementary schools have a, an informational center for the library? They probably do. Because I remember when we, we actually went through the schools and they showed us. So I'm sure they all do. So I make a motion that we rescind policy 2420, use of library information centers, and present it to the board for approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Yeah, I think they have a whole library curriculum.
It was interesting, they had volunteers at that time. They actually did technology in the libraries. It was really interesting. I, I would love for you all, it's wonderful to go through each school at some point in time and meet staff and, and just see, see the wonderful work they do. It's, it's nice to be able then to relay that to the public. It's a blessing. It was, when I saw the technology, they were looking for volunteers, and there was a great shortage at the time because the volunteers actually came in and set up the technology in the libraries. It was, that was in the elementary schools. And can you imagine? Every class that came in was a different, it was every class.
Yeah.
Every hour, they had another class. And so it was, it was quite a project to, when you have the numbers we have, everything becomes much more complex. But anyway, I've said enough.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would love, I would love to get in there and, and visit and see what's going on.
I.
Maybe when things are a little bit smoother and it doesn't feel like.
But Mr. Dr. McKinney has, has instituted this wonderful program now where every school board meeting, we're going to have somebody.
I know, I love it.
And that's such a, you will learn so much that you had no idea.
Reminds us what we're doing here.
And, and it gives you an appreciation and a reason to do it. It gives you a, I don't know, it just gives you a depth of appreciation that you can't have unless you meet these wonderful, the wonderful staff we have and hear the wonderful things they actually do, so, but I'm biased. Up and told, anyway. So where are we?
So you moved to rescind policy 2420 to be sent to the full board. So Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The next policy, which is redundant, is policy 3240, attendance during inclement weather.
Well, and to be honest with you, that's, that's the superintendent's biggest nightmare.
Yes.
It really is. I always feel so sorry for them when they, because you don't know until the minute it happens how bad or how many people are affected. And so I, I always feel, so I make a motion that we rescind policy 3240, attendance during inclement weather.
I will second.
Mr. Parker, it looks like you did some work. It was a lot of, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I certainly didn't mean to.
Oh, no, I just cut and pasted. Figured out how to use Excel, put things in order. Okay. On the motion to rescind policy 3240, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Off to the full board.
And then we want to make a motion to rescind policy 3410, pupil attendance records, and send it to the full board for approval.
Yes.
I'll second.
And that's because it's redundant? Because it got to have pupil attendance? I mean, it. Of course. Okay, thank you.
And then those attendance records are sent up, we have to submit them to the state and?
Well, and last year, I remember that with the pandemic, they had to tell us how many students were unaccounted for because of the, and that was a really critical figure to use going forward. So those records, I can't imagine the hours that must go into doing something like that, but, but it's necessary to do. So, so I made the motion, right?
Mm-hmm. And Mr. Guarino, second it? So on the motion to send the, send policy 3410 to the full board to be rescinded, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Motion passes, three to zero. Two more policies. This is exciting.
So we want to make a motion to rescind policy 4233, students with HIV or AIDS.
Yes.
And I assume they must be keeping records of that, that must be redundant also?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Seem motioned it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just looking for a second.
Second. I didn't hear, I didn't hear.
Too much hot air coming from this side of the.
No, that's okay. I'm hard of hearing. I got to get some hearing.
Sorry.
You're going, you're speedy Gonzalez today. Okay, on the motion to rescind policy 4233 to be sent to the full board, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And finally, I make a motion that we rescind policies I K B and 2217 homework. Do they even do homework anymore? It's not required, is it? It's not required, is it?
It's not required.
Oh, can you put your mic on? I know people have questions about this.
Homework is, you know, in some classes required, others not. It varies. But we don't need a policy spelled out in that level of detail because it's outdated and how we think about homework has changed. So.
And a lot of this is in, I mean, I know we really haven't touched upon, just because we've been managing more pressing factors, but our, our five-year strategic plan really covers at-home learning, specifically in regards to homework and just reducing some of that anxiety that, that kids have when they're not able to access certain pieces of, certain tools that they need for homework and.
So I made the motion, right?
You did.
Okay, thank you. What's my name?
I'll second.
Oh, thank you. I'll try to remember. Mr. Guarino, seconded. So do we need to split these up into two polit, two motions, though? Or can we combine them because they're both under the same header?
I think that's why they've done it that way. But whether that's correct, I have no idea. I don't, I didn't realize that we had any policies that were covered in two different places. That's redundant in and of itself, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Okay. So on the motion to send policies I K B and 2217 in regards to homework to the full board to be rescinded, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Wow, guys. This is. That's it? We get back up to the top to the agenda? Yeah, before we close out, I mean, that, that's the agenda. But before we close out, I want to give another thank you to Mr. Rodriguez for putting together that very detailed packet about the data, the data distribution and governance. But also, I think Mr. Parker and I had a lot of fun going through these and identifying. And we have the next, I mean, if anybody wants to see my master plan.
When I first came on the board, they gave me a book of all the policies. Do they still do that? Did you get a?
Well, they're online now, but what I was able to do.
Online back then, I believe, also. I, but they gave us a.
Yeah, they didn't give me like a packet.
Well, it may have been, it may be now because of this paper shortage and the other, I mean, that.
Right.
I don't know. But I just wondered because I don't. And it seemed like, it did seem like a waste. It seemed like a waste.
We do give a packet for new hires.
For the.
Oh, for new hires. No, I, I think Ms. Seem meant for the board.
For the teachers. Well, that would be wonderful, yes. I don't know if they ever get to go through all because it's a lot of, yeah, a lot of, a lot of paperwork. But it's nice to have because if you're at home and you have a question in your mind, you can jump up and look for it. And sometimes you can find the answer without bothering people, which is kind of nice, so.
Yeah. So hopefully, if, if people follow my, my pact, we'll be on track for doing, I'm looking at, and granted, we only have a couple more months until next January, and who knows who's going to take over for policy chair. But I took some time to outline if we do like seven or eight policies each policy meeting, we'll be able to clean them up, update them. And then, because they are so far behind, I think it's by 2025, if we follow kind of the pattern that, that I wrote out, then we're back to being in that four. Every four years, things are getting reviewed appropriately, so.
So, Mr. Guarino, yourself, the three of us will be here, right?
It's just me and you.
Oh, you're not running?
Nope.
Oh, but we'll miss you, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry that you're leaving us.
Yeah, the gang, the gang's getting all.
Yes.
Broken up. But hopefully, we're able to stay on top of this and, and make it easier for future policy committees. And then in addition to just cleaning up for administration and not needing to have all that extra.
I have wanted to say to the public that with the election coming up, it's my prayer that they will all be very analytical about who they're going to vote for and, and look into the candidates. I was watching on TV today. They had some of the candidates, very interesting and insightful information that you learn about these, both for Alderman and school board. And, and I hope that we will see a, a good turnout, that it, that it won't be a small percentage of our voters, but that our community will show how much they care about our schools and about our town and our community by voting. Because I think that's what you do. When you go to vote, you are showing that you care, that you spend, like, I was, I watched TV all afternoon and I thought, you know, I really don't want to do this. But how am I going to vote if I don't watch it and I don't know who these candidates are and what they represent and what they believe and, and how they are able to articulate, you know? Because it's, it's such a critical, they have a lot of influence on your children and on our community. And so I, I, it's my hope that we'll all take this very seriously and make our best effort to, to make it a win-win for our, for our whole, for the town of Nashville and for our, and most especially for our children here at the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seem.
You mean the city, city of Nashville?
Well, you're right, but I think.
Our community, our community of Nashville.
When I think about, about the V O E, of course, I think about the kids because my heart is that I want, whatever I do or say, it's my prayer that it, that it enriches the kids. But obviously, if we enrich the kids, then our whole state, community, nation even is, because, because our schools are the single, I think they are the single most influential part that they have in their lives until they get, you know, until they become adults. And even then, you never, have you ever forgotten the kids, the teachers that influenced you? I haven't.
No.
The teachers who made a difference, who, who, who were the exceptional teachers. And Nashville has, we have more than our share, I promise you. I have seen very few that I wasn't impressed with. So I think Nashville's very lucky that we have, but we're lucky that we have more than a third of our teachers, our tenured teachers. That means they have experience. They've been there, done that. And that makes a lot of difference in your ability to do it well. Practice makes perfect, as the saying goes. And so I think Nashville's very, very fortunate. And when I hear people disparage our teachers, it breaks my heart because they deserve more respect from us than that for the sacrifices they make and for the commitment. I mean, I, I could tell you stories, Sarah, but I remember one, one of our teachers had won a, she won the lottery. And instead of taking that money and spending it on her family, she had a family in her classroom who had no place to live. They were living on the street and they had no money to get an apartment. And she took that money and gave them the first month and the security, which may not seem like a lot, folks, but you're talking probably at least $3,000. And so I, I can tell you that I don't see that kind of sacrifice made very often. And our teachers do it more often than you think they do.
Yes.
And so I, I just hope that we all remember that, that we are very fortunate to have these people who serve our community so well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seem.
Preacher Zane will shut up.
Very well said. We're, we're a city, but with a small town.
Yeah.
Feel, really.
That's exactly right.
Yep.
And to close out our 1980s policy, I'll quote, "The children are our future."
Yes. That's a good quote. Because they absolutely are our future. I will be leaving you folks, going to be with the Lord someday soon.
Oh, not too soon, Sandra.
Well, and I have to tell you, when you get to, when you get to the senior years, you think of that. You say to yourself, are there people that I'm leaving behind who have the values that I want my children to carry forward? That I want my neighbors and my, the people I love? And my nation? Because in the end, we're, we're one nation under God, so.
Thank you.
Preacher Zane needs to shut up.
Thank you, Ms. Seem. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Unless, do you guys have anything else that you want to add? No? And thank you, Ms. Carrie, for coming and being available for us if we had any questions. But I think what was presented to us tonight was very clear.
And sorry to keep you so long with my preaching. I appreciate, I know you guys have probably been here since six, seven o'clock because you, you have to get up and run all day and all.
Oh, yeah.
All night makes it hard, too. So thank you for your service.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Second.
Okay. On the motion to adjourn, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
This motion is, this meeting is adjourned at 7:02.